Yeah.
Okay, so it's 6:15, so we're gonna call the meeting to order. Um, so first of all, we have two board members remote, so um, we just have to state our name, location. If there's anyone with us separately, Sean and I are not together. And we're pretending remotely, so I'll start, so um, I'm Holly Kennedy, I'm at my home on Plain Road. My husband's here, but he's in another room. The reason I'm attending remotely is I have had COVID symptoms this week, negative rapid tests, but my employer requires a PCR, so I had that done. And I'm waiting for the results of that, which, you know, the state guidance and whatnot says you have to isolate while you wait for those results. So that's what I'm doing. Um, and um, so Sean, your turn.
Sean, Larry, I'm in Portsmouth, New Hampshire, I am alone, and I am attending remotely because of a work commitment.
Okay, great. So all votes will be taken by roll call tonight, that's the other piece that we have to have to say with this. All right, so um, I was gonna call for a motion to accept the public and non-public minutes of December 8th, but um, I forgot to mention to Ann, and I apologize for that, I noticed it on Sunday, that the non-public minutes are not in my packet, I don't know if they were in anybody else's.
Nope, I don't have them.
No.
Okay, so if we could just, Ann, if we could just include those in next month's packet, and then I just need to, a motion to accept the public minutes of December 8th?
I'll make the motion to accept the public minutes of December 8th.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, corrections?
Yes, I noticed that the, in the minutes, our Julia and my reasons for being remote was not listed, and legally, we have to have that in there.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, then, just all those in favor of approving the public minutes of December 8th as amended, say aye, and let's just do a roll call on that, so if we can start, I guess, online first, and then go to the room, so, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Great, thank you. Then I just need a motion to accept the public minutes of January 5th.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Okay, any corrections or changes or discussion? Okay, then, all those in favor of approving the public minutes of January 5th, say aye, so yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Great, thank you. Okay, next up is update on COVID-19 related items, so I know there's a lot to cover there, so if you could just start and direct, anybody else there who needs to speak to it?
Holly, can I ask a question before we start?
I'm sorry, yes, go ahead.
Should we make a motion to table the non-public minutes of December 8th, just so we have taken some action on it?
Oh, that's a good point, sure.
Right, I'll make a motion to table the non-public minutes of December 8th.
No, second.
Okay, um, any discussion on that?
One second, I gotta go converse to the chips, I'll be back.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Sam had to leave.
Kevin has to leave from this meeting.
Okay. Um, so all those in favor of tabling the non-public of December 8th? I'm sorry, what's going on?
It is Kevin.
I think we knew, I think we knew who you meant.
Sorry.
Not Julia's husband, Kevin, but.
But his real name is Kevin, so I know that, and I'm sorry.
All right, all those in favor of tabling the non-public of December 8th, say aye, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Great, thank you, okay, now on, thank you Sean for that, now on to updates on the COVID-19 related items.
Yep, thank you, Holly, so this is a very difficult time for our schools. There's no doubt about it that without extraordinary effort from our staff and our parents willing to work with us and our students, I don't think we'd be able to keep an in-person classroom experience going, but currently, we are. We do have 23 active cases right now, and we have had 112 since the start of the school year. And when you think of that, think that in the 12 days we've had, in January, we've had 30 cases, so we are, by the end of the month, we may hit about half of the number of cases we've had in the entire year. Currently, in Cheshire County, there's a 13.8 positivity rate, and there's been 1,245 new cases in the last 14 days. So it's no doubt that there's a lot of spread in our community, and I think I'd be understating anything else if I didn't say this, this is really a serious situation we're in, we're trying to deal with it. And what we've done is we've put together a quick ad hoc committee so we can make some recommendations for you tonight. That included our two nurses, our two principals, Ann and myself, and we've been looking at the new CDC guidance and the DHHS guidance that came out just a couple of days after that. And we, we think we'd like to recommend that to the board, and I have Elise here to answer any questions. In addition to that, I know the board's aware that we're getting ready to look at some testing, and I'd like Elise to speak to that, so we've kind of got a comprehensive change that includes the new CDC guidance, and it includes a recommendation on some ability to do some testing under certain unique circumstances, and also going back to an option to have our special ed meetings, the meetings on individual student IPs held remotely when a parent deems that would be most appropriate. So those are all the changes, and I'd like to, the big one is the changing to the new CDC guidance, which is probably a little bit utilitarian relative to the difference from the 10-day to a 5-day, but I'd like Elise to speak to that, if you don't mind, Elise, and then we can take all the questions tonight, but we would like a vote so we can inform our parents, and we'd actually, you know, like our communication plan to help us inform our parents, and maybe we could start this as early as Tuesday up next week, since we have Monday off with, as a Martin Luther King Junior holiday. So Elise, can you just kind of give them a quick overview, so everyone here can hear what we've agreed to, at least at the committee level?
Sure. Hi, everyone, I'm Elise Cody, I'm the school nurse at the elementary school, and we're going to recommend the CDC guidelines, they're a bit complicated and complex, but um, you know, the CDC and the New Hampshire of Health and Human Services haven't done us wrong yet. I think that we haven't had an outbreak in school yet, which is really important to note. Outbreaks have been happening outside of school, but not within school. Um, another important part that we want to bring up is Convenient MD. There's our, a location in Keene, and then there throughout New Hampshire, they have a school nurse partnership, and I work with them on a lot of different things, they get us our EpiPens and inhaler standing order. So we have gone through the process to, and been approved for a CLIA certification, which is basically means that we're like a mini lab, and Convenient MD is being just kind of overrun with people getting tested, so they are in full support of us testing staff and students, because it will help them a lot, and they will do whatever, you know, they've been pretty open that they'll do what they can to help us. So we have the certification, and we have gotten the board's permission to start testing staff. So we've begun doing that, and I've tested a few staff members, and it's gone great. Um, the hope is that the board will approve us to begin testing students with parent consent. We do have a consent form that is drawn up, that I have in front of me, parents, we won't be able to test without parent-signed permission. Um, and of course, the child will have to be, you know, especially with the younger ones, they'll have to cooperate. If they're fighting or really uncomfortable, we won't go forward with the testing, we'll call the parent and let them know. Um, but this just basically means, the certification means that we're, the school district is able to test, and it's just gonna be the two nurses that test. We're going to use the Binexx Now Rapid Tests, we know that they're not as reliable as the PCR tests, so if there is some question, we can ask for a PCR test. Um, I think that testing, having the ability to test at school is going to give us a huge advantage and help us be much safer. There's parents are having a really, really hard time, and it feels bad when I have to send kids home and say, you know, you either 10 days or test. Parents are having such a hard time testing, locations are being shut down because of staffing issues. Parents are being told that there are, you know, they have an appointment, but it's 12 days out, and their student could be back in 10 days, so I think that testing onsite will be really helpful. We'll have to have an isolation area, which we have in the elementary school, and I believe the high school has one as well. And then testing will be done there with staff, I've been asking them to wait in their car, they come in, I swab, they wait in their car until the results are ready, then I grab them and let them know. We have not received any positives yet, they've all been negative. That was a mouthful, so I will leave it to you guys, see what kind of questions you have.
Yep, so anybody, whoever has questions, um, we can start in the room, or Sean, if you have questions, whichever way is easiest.
Well, I need to, I just need to listen to what's going on, because I only got this today, and I was at work. I'm not at home, I'm only working on a tablet, I wasn't able to download the attachments, so I don't have any information. I don't, like, the information was given, and that's great, I need to hear what everyone's talking about, but I don't have the information that I need in order to, you know, do my due diligence, so I need to hear what the other conversation is.
Yeah, so do you want to maybe give Elise and Wayne and Ann and other people on the committee, if you want to give an overview of maybe the changes?
Of the CDC guidelines?
Well, that, and I know, yeah, whatever it was that was sent out, Sean, if this is okay with you, it was sent out that today, that maybe, you know, the points on there, that Sean wasn't able to, I mean, it was sent to us, you know, this afternoon, so I understand if we're working, some of us might not have had a chance to take a look at it.
Yeah, so the CDC guidelines are, they're different, so um, it says that somebody that's positive for COVID-19 could come back to school within five days, or could end their isolation in five days, but there's a lot of criteria. So, so a person that's positive, they need to isolate for five days mandatory. After five days, if they're fever-free, for at least 24 hours without fever-reducing medications, and their symptoms are improving, they can return as long as they are wearing a well-fitted medical face mask when around other people, and I spoke with Ann, where she ordered some NK-N95s, which are a little more comfortable than N95s, pediatric size, and we have adult size, so I'm going to strongly recommend that the students that come back wear the KN95s. Not, we're not gonna have a cloth mask or a surgical mask, it's gonna be a KN95 if, if they opt in and qualify for the five days. Um, and it says that they should avoid people who are immunocompromised, or at high risk for severe disease, and they should avoid travel. This also says, note, per the CDC guidance, you can take an antigen test on day five before ending isolation. If positive, you should continue to isolate for 10 days, so we're really going to recommend that people test on the fifth day before coming back. I know a lot of people are getting able to get, home tests are much easier to get now, so if they're positive, we're gonna strongly recommend that they stay home, I don't think it's required, it's not required within the CDC guidelines. It's a strong recommendation. And then, people who need to quarantine after household exposure, so we know household contacts, I want to bring up again, if you are fully vaccinated, and for children right now, that means two vaccinations or the one Johnson &amp; Johnson. They're, they're not ready for a booster yet, there hasn't been enough time, so um, if they qualify for, if they're, if they qualify under that fully vaccinated, they can come to school, and this is what's happening now with adults, fully vaccinated people, someone is positive in the household, they come to school as long as they are symptom-free, and they're just monitoring closely for symptoms, they're wearing a well-fitted mask, and that, so we're really hoping that parents will vaccinate their kids, because that will bring kids back into school. So say dad is positive for COVID-19, Johnny can come to school if he's fully vaccinated until or unless he gets symptoms, if he never gets symptoms, he doesn't have to miss school, which I think is really important to note. So they recommend that they, that if you're a household, sorry, a household contact and not fully vaccinated, that you stay home and away from others for five days after your last day of exposure. So you're, if you're a household contact, and dad is positive, he's home for five days, you would be home for 10 days, because you need to stay home an extra five days. You need to watch yourself for symptoms for 10 days after your last exposure. You should get tested at least five days after your exposure, even if there are no symptoms. And then, at the 10-day mark, they recommend that you wear a well-fitted medical face mask, so then again, I'll recommend the KN95s, and avoid people who are immunocompromised, and avoid travel if possible.
Um, thank you, that was helpful, so I know, right now, we're talking about the CDC guideline changes. I know in the, um, I assume we're just gonna vote on this all as, as a one thing rather than piecemeal, so I know there were handouts for, um, changes to like, the, you know, some certain pieces of the reopening plan and stuff like that. And so, I know Sean wasn't able to access everything, so if some, if somebody wants to speak to, to that, you know, just so we can talk through that, since he wasn't able to read about it.
Yeah, Ann, Ann has been coordinating this, but I, you know, the changes aren't as dramatic to the reopening plan, certainly.
Yes. Okay, so the only thing that, we have three items that we want to update on the reopening plan. And on, it's on page four, the 504, and medical care accommodations. We just want to add, meetings will be held remotely at this time, it will be updated monthly. It's something that we'll bring to the board on a monthly basis. On page five, the special education services, we want to cross out, parents will be given the option to attend meetings in person if they so desire, and do not have any symptoms associated with COVID. We will, we will just say that this will be update, this will, all meetings will be remotely, this will be updated on a monthly basis. On the appendices, we want to, the nursing appendices B, we want to update the information that is there. If you, if you go to the appendix B, that what we want to add is an option three, and that's participating in the school's rapid antigen testing, and a consent form must be signed. And then we're gonna, we have the old DHHS guidelines, and what we're going to do is plug in for now the guideline noted number 53 from DHHS, which is, corresponds with the CDC. They are in the process of updating the toolbox on their website, they haven't finished it yet, so we, when we do get that, we'll just automatically go right to those guidelines that they had. But for right now, the update number 53 is what we'll do. The other thing is we want to insert the antigen testing form, which you all should have a copy of. It's the, this is what we, um, this is what we do for Convenient MD. We have to keep track of every time we test and stuff, and this is the form that needs to be completed. And the other form is the consent form, and that just gives permission to our parents for us to test their child, and what there's, what some of the side effects may be, and then by printing and signing and dating, you give your consent to have you or your child tested as part of the Safer At School screening program. And this consent will not expire to August 30th, 2022, unless otherwise requested. Those are the only real changes. The main reason, the main reason we are recommending these changes is because the nurses have to have something to go by. If we decide to go from something different than either the DHHS guidelines or the CDC guidelines, it's going to put a strain on the nurses when they're trying to tell parents why our guidelines are different than the CDC and the DHHS. We really want to keep, we've, they've been great with the guidelines so far, like Elise said earlier, we want to keep following the science, it's important for us to be able to have the same information that every, most other school districts in this state are using.
All right, great, thank you. Um, yeah, I think, thank you both, I think you covered each of the handouts, the attachments that were included, so, um, do we have any, Sean, did you have any question, you do, I see your hand.
I just wanted to play with the raised hand feature.
Yeah.
So can I just confirm, because Ann, some of the reference material you were talking to is what I can't open, so the only thing that you were referencing was really B, so I just want to summarize, and can you just let me know if I heard it correctly, would that be okay?
Yeah.
So what we want to do is, we want to keep sped remote, we want to update our plan to the current CDC and DHHS guidelines. We want to add information and a permission form for COVID testing for students, and that would be, you know, only with parent consent, and that will all be in there, and all the information around testing would be included in the plan, is that what I heard correctly?
That is correct.
All right, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
There was one piece, Sean, if, I don't know if you could access any of it, but that they were asking to, that when we update, you know, the communication plan, when we go out with communications about these changes, that there's a sample email from SAU29 that they sent out last week to parents about summarizing changes, and I think, I don't have the email, the body of the email printed out, but I think, you know, Ann was suggesting in the email that we, um, recommend to parents, or I don't remember if that's the word you used, so let me know, Ann, if I misquoted you, but, um, that they, you know, about vaccinating their kids. So just, there was that piece, I don't know if you saw that too.
I saw something briefly on that, and I am completely comfortable deferring to community connections on that, I have complete faith in all of you.
Thank you. All right, um, okay, so, do you have any more questions, Sean?
I think I'm good, thank you.
All right, so anybody in, at the SAU have any questions?
I just have one that seems a little contradictory to me, and it may just be how the packet was printed out, but on the backside of the consent form, it says rapid COVID-19 antigen testing, and right on the top, it says, if you're test positive, follow CDC isolation guidelines, and it says, if it's been at least 10 days since the onset of your symptoms.
Jay sent that to us, this is such a, we had a plan set, and we changed our minds. This was something that we got from Convenient MD, and they haven't had a chance to update it.
Okay, because it just contradicts what we're trying to do here, it's on the back sheet.
We'll make sure that we get an updated one from them, Elise is already working on that.
Okay, great, thank you, that was all I had.
So my only question was, when we're testing, are we only testing staff and students, or are we testing community members, like parents as well?
So only staff and students are covered under the SAS program that we're running, unfortunately.
All right.
Um, April, did you have any questions?
I did not.
Okay, my only question, well, kind of a comment, is that, um, that I think the, the reopening plan, what's attached in it, the sports plan, is the fall sports plan, and there were some slight changes to the winter sports plan, so I don't know if, if when you're updating the reopening plan, if you want to put in the winter plan then too, and, you know, differentiate it, just so when it all goes out, everybody has, you know, what's happening right now. So that would just be my suggestion.
Yeah, we will, I just, I didn't even realize that, it's been a little hectic.
Oh yeah, no, that's okay, that's why there's like so many eyes on it, you know? And I did have one, let me see here, one question, not necessarily on the documents that we, that were sent out, and thank you all for all the work you put into it, I know that they just came out last week, so thank you for, you know, jumping on it and getting everything updated. I just have a question about the timeline, when, when, when we have a positive case, and you know, it updates on the website and whatever, and then the board gets an email about it, and, and it lists, which is very helpful, like when each case was last in, in the building or in school. I just have a question as to, because I would try to keep like track of it and kind of watch it, and like, like, I'll use this as an example, so the one we got yesterday, there was one case that wasn't in school since 12/16/21. Now I know we're like, at the mercy of when we're told, you know, that's when we were notified, but like, I, you know, if you get a, if you get a test, whenever you get it, and, you know, it's usually, you know, whatever, 48 or a little bit more, a couple of days to get it back, is this, and I know it's not our, our fault, because we, we report it when we're told, but I'm just confused as to how somebody could be out of school since, for, you know, almost, you know, since a month ago, and they're just telling us today.
No, they're not telling us today, that's the last time they were in school. So in the situation that you're discussing, a member of their family tested positive on or around 12/16, so that student has been in isolation since that date.
Okay, thank you.
Received a positive test within the time that I give you.
Yeah, so now, okay, okay, then my, I, my brain didn't even go there, that, that makes more sense. And so like, the person was unvaxxed probably, so they had to isolate longer, okay.
Correct.
All right, that makes sense, so now, when, and also, in that same email, we had one case who was in school the previous day, so you can't get a PCR result back that fast, so are we taking positives, like if they test a rapid test and they're positive, we take that as a positive, we aren't waiting for the PCR to call it a positive?
Correct.
Okay.
Because it's so hard to get the PCR test, I mean, Jan had one person call, the latest, earliest they could get a date was April. You know, it just depends on your doctor is, who everything is, so it's, we're, we're now, if there's a positive positive, we're taking that.
Okay, and FYI, there, you don't have to be a Vermont resident to get the testing through the state of Vermont, and because I, I work in Vermont, but that didn't matter, they didn't even ask me that. I, I was able to get a test today, sign up for a test to get it over at Rescue Inc. today, and they have a lot of drive-in tests over in Brattleboro in the coming days, so if there is people having trouble, maybe check out the state of Vermont's website, because they have no problem with border town people coming over, so. Great, thank you, that answers my questions on that, so, um, if there are no other questions, um, so Wayne, I, we just need a motion to approve the updates.
Just to, to approve the recommendations, and obviously, if there's some small variation that you need when you put out your communication plan, I think that could be done, but substantively, we need a recommendation from the board so we can begin looking at this, and I don't know if you, in that recommendation, if you want to just keep in mind that if it were possible to get that out sort of the end of the week, that would be wonderful, but I know that's a whole other step. That's even possible.
Yeah, I know, because we'll, we'll look at the, we'll look at the communication plan, I know it starts with certain board members drafting it, and certain board members checking it, and back and forth, and, and with, with working and work schedules and whatnot, but yeah. So I mean, definitely, I would hope we could get it out by Tuesday, since we, you know, most of us have a long weekend, but, but yeah, we'll work that out as, as ourselves, and who's gonna do what, so. All right, so if there are no more questions, I just need a motion to accept the proposed changes. accept the proposed changes.
I'll make the motion.
Motion to accept or to accept the recommendations.
Well, then I'll second it.
Thank you.
Alright, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Yes.
Yes, yep.
Great, thank you. And thank you to, I don't want to name names, but all of you who are on that little committee. I don't want to miss anybody, but thank you very much. Okay, next up, we have winter sports update. So I think Kevin slash Sam, I heard was in the room. Oh yeah, he needs a mic.
Just looking to make a quick change to the protocols that I brought to the board. We have a lot of room left in the gymnasium after our players bring their four guests. I'm getting a lot of heat from opposing athletic directors as we are the only one in Division Four not allowing guests, visiting guests. Just looking to get, so that we can get two of them. I got a phone call from an AD the other day who was not so happy. We were going there, their girls were coming here. I asked if fans were allowed there. He said yes. He asked if they're allowed here. I said no. And then he turned around and said that our fans could not go there then if they can't come. So just looking to make that change so that they can get at least two guests. My guess is they're coming from a long ways away. We're not going to get everybody on that team to bring two guests. My guess would probably be somewhere between 10 and 12 people is what we're adding into that gym. The whole right side stands are pretty much open, so we definitely have the space to do so.
Any questions or discussion, questions for Sam on that? Comments, discussion?
I have a question. Do any of the other schools or other districts, if they're accepting visitors from, or their guests from visiting teams, do they require any kind of like showing like a vaccination card or anything like that?
No, what most of them are doing are, so I would send a will call ticket slash thingy to the opposing AD. They would get it to their coach the day before. They would write down the kids, the player's name, who will be attending and a phone number so that we can do some contact tracing if we had.
Anything else? Okay, what about in the SAU? Any questions or comments about that for Sam?
No, I think when we look at the amount of space they have in the gym, they could easily keep those clusters six feet or more apart. So I feel like it doesn't compromise our safety.
Okay, so if there's no further discussion, we just need a motion to approve that change to the sports plan?
I'll make a recommendation to approve.
A motion to approve the recommendation?
Yes.
I'll second.
Any other discussion?
So can I just confirm that the superintendent and the building principal are okay with the amendment?
Yeah, Anne is giving a thumbs up there.
Alright.
Okay, is there any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. So that amendment passes. While we're on the winter sports plan, I want to bring up, in our packet, we had a letter from members of the student council asking us to reconsider the mask requirement for the basketball players. So we just want to say thank you very much for your letter and for using your voice and you know, reaching out to us. So do we want to have some discussion on this letter?
I know I do.
Okay.
Me start. So I appreciate the student council, you know, put this letter together and everything else. I've, you know, long advocated for student voice and for students kind of speaking up and stuff like that. But I've also advocated for us as a district to basically teach students how to use their voice, because there are ways to use your voice and ways not to. So for me, when I look at this, right, I, I have a lot of questions that pop in my head and they're not questions that I expect any answers to. You know, but those questions are like, you know, do, do these students know what the, you know, what the COVID transmission rates are? You know, do they know the precautions that we're trying to keep, trying to make to keep them healthy? Do they know that we're revisiting this, you know, month after month and we're doing this because that we know, you know, that they don't want to wear their masks? And when I, and with that last one, it's like, it's almost like, seems like nagging to me and I, and I, I it, it hit me the wrong way completely, right? I seem to remember, and I don't know what season it was in. It might have been, it might have been spring sports, that we had athletes there at the, you know, in, in the conference room and said, we'll do whatever we need to do in order to play. And to me, this says, well, now we don't want to do whatever we need to do to play. And again, this could be from my point of view of being a little bit offended by this. You know, and I question, you know, it's on district letterhead, so you know, I, I question who who guided or didn't guide these students in this conversation or what kind of conversation happened? So that's really all I wanted to say about that because I'm not in favor of removing any kind of mask mandate for sports right now and not in any way, shape or form. Nor will I until I, until the transmission rates are down. And I, I think I'm just going to stop there.
Okay, thank you. We have a comment. I'm sorry, Anne, if I'm jumping on you because of your toes, because I see the chat too here. Marilyn. Uh, if she, she
Marilyn is the advisor for that.
That's what I was thinking when I saw her comment. So is the board okay with letting Marilyn speak to, in response to Sean?
Of course.
I am, yeah.
Oh yeah, yeah, no, I just want to, you know, because it's, you know, out of, you know, she's, just go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you very much for taking the time to talk to the students about this. This whole topic came up well before the Omicron. And as they were just doing their research and in comment to Sean's question, they did do their research. They did a lot of research on what other schools were doing. They actually got on the website to even look at professional organizations. They looked at some of the statistics that were going on. They, they did their due diligence in my opinion, so I was very proud of them from that aspect. As they were doing this, then the Omicron came. And I told them, I said, I think that this is not going to go. But I think it's worth you putting this forth so that they can hear you. And in the case that Omicron suddenly disappears and we get a, you know, a good situation coming around that down the line, they will have already heard your concerns or your requests and then we can move forward. So, and they agreed with me. They said, oh, this is not good. And I said, no, it's not good. But I still think you should put it forth. I do want to clarify something, because it's not just blatant not wearing your mask. It, it was very specific, I believe. I don't have the letter right here in front of me, but it was very specific that said
During play, I believe.
Players that are on the court and that anybody else sitting in the chairs would be required. And apparently that seems to be the go-to on a lot of teams. So again, I think they're very cognizant of what's going on in Omicron right now and that was not meant to belittle any decisions that were made prior. They're very much in agreement to try to protect the school community in themselves. So again, I encourage them to at least move forward with it. Get it on the record and if by some miracle out there, we are able to see a decrease in all these infections, that maybe that might be a possibility down the road for just the players who are on the court. So thank you very much on behalf of the students.
Okay, thank you, Marilyn. Does anybody else?
Questions?
That's what I was just going to say. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Kind of for Marilyn, since you're the go-to here. Anyone else in the SAU? I don't have, so if nobody else in, in the SAU has any questions, I don't have necessarily a question. I just have like one comment for me. It, it's always going to come down to, we follow the state and CDC guidance and I double-checked yesterday and the state has changed some things in its toolkit. But it still is calling close contact sports a high-risk activity and, you know, recommending masks. So until the state changes their guidance, I, I, for me, it'll always be, we said we're going with the state. We have qualified discretionary, what was called Sean, discretionary something immunity?
Discretionary function immunity.
Thank you. As long as we follow state and CDC guidance, so I would, even if, you know, hopefully, they say Omicron is going to peak, I read, in a couple of weeks. So, yeah, even if cases go down, if the state doesn't change their guidance, I, I wouldn't be in favor of changing it. But I, I am very impressed and I, you know, let, let the students know when next time you have student council that, you know, the board appreciates hearing from them.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And I will pass that along to all of them.
Thank you. I do have one question about sports while we have Sam here. And I guess Mrs. Free Tag could answer too. So I, I know that we had had some games canceled or postponed or whichever it was. And, you know, I was hearing things from parents out there that it was due to COVID on the teams. I know, was it the other team? I mean, is our team, what's the process, even if there's cases on either team, just to kind of clarify that, because there have been some people asking about it.
So we did postpone one game from our aspect. We did have an athlete that was in quarantine. I called the other AD, which was asked of me by the board. That we did have the conversation. She, that person hadn't tested positive. But I did throw it to their school and their AD. He brought it to his administration. We decided with best to cancel the game. The latest one was not us. The other school had had an outbreak in their program, so they, they did not, they texted me. I said, hey, let's not play. And I have the text message. We need to prove that, that it wasn't us that canceled it. It was the other school.
Okay, great. No, I just, like I said, people, you know, they hear stuff and obviously, so thank you for, for clarifying the whole process of it. Awesome. Alright, so I guess we don't need, we just talked about the letter. If Sam's not proposing that change, we don't need to take a, a vote on that, so. Alright, great. Thank you so much, Sam and Marilyn, for, for speaking to that. So if we have no more questions on winter sports, we can move on to the OSTCP presentation. I know Sean, and I think Taylor was going to speak to it.
Taylor's here, if we could take the mic and Karen Thompson had asked that Taylor speak to this. And I understand that you're okay with that, so I'd like to thank her for willingness to do that.
So if, so I don't know, I mean, do you, Taylor, do you want me, because I kind of wrote it up, so do you want me to like you can support and
I am here for questions if anyone has any questions.
Yeah, I was, I was concerned when I realized that I had to attend remotely because obviously sometimes when there are questions, it's better to have someone there. So thank you very much for, for, for coming. So basically what this is, it's more of a proposal than a presentation, because there is an ask at the end. As you all know, that the Hinsdale School District was one of just a very few districts that got the grant for the out-of-school time career pathways program. Part of that grant involved having like an advisory committee that gets together to kind of help, you know, steer, you know, where we're going to go with with ELOs and career pathway awareness and stuff like that. So I was asked to be on that advisory board as a community member. So I, you know, stepped up because, you know, I've been a longtime fan of the ELO program and would like to try to help out wherever I can. One of the things that the grant requires is that it requires a communication plan. And having done the communication plan for the board, I, I volunteered to do the communication plan for, for the OSTCP advisory group. I have developed this proposal from that communication plan, just so you can kind of get kind of a feeling for what we have to do as far as communicating the career pathway awareness opportunities to parents, students, community, and just all the stakeholders that are involved in ELOs and career pathway awareness. So one of the things that we need to do is we need to make sure that all of these different stakeholders, you know, have information on what the program is, what we're trying to do and what opportunities are available to their students. In particular, how do we get, how do we create awareness for those students that are typically furthest from opportunity? Which I think that we do pretty well in Hinsdale. We have, some of the ELOs that we have are or have had in the past are from students that they themselves have said, you know, well, I wasn't a good student. I was going to drop out, but I, I've got this program and, and, and I did it and it, you know, really sparked my interest in other areas. So what we need to do is really need to kind of expand on that and even for like parents and community members, for them to know that there are other ways, you know, for, that students can achieve, essentially, can achieve success. So in this, in this proposal, I kind of outlined, you know, some of that stuff, some of the stuff that we have to do, the goals of the grant and some of the key components. Now, when we look at putting communication out there, we do have several platforms, so we did an inventory of what those platforms are. That, you know, involves social media, community events, photography, one conversations, in-school events, business expos, you know, for our business partners and stuff like that. And as we're looking at the platforms, we also need to create, and it's very specifically stated, we need to create a apparent information center, a PIC. So when we look at all these different platforms, like, oh, great, we have all these opportunities to get information out to people, but how do we what's the core of that? Like, how, what's that central point that a parent or a student or a business partner? What's that central point that they could access to really then, you'll learn about these other things, these other platforms or can be directed towards these other platforms? Because when you just have those other platforms out there, they're kind of scattered all over the place, right? You'd kind of need to direct people to multiple different spots versus do you direct them to one single spot, which is like a hub? And then work out from there. They think of the spokes of a wheel, right? You have a hub and then you have the spokes and that hub is your central spot. So ideally, you know, we, when we think about that, we typically think, well, how about a website? And we have the district website. But then we're looking at the program, right? We're looking at what we can do on the, on the district website. And we really can't bog down, because we also need access to it, because we need ready, you know, timely updates and ready access. And we can't do that with the district website, nor should we. You know, we should not have access to the district website. That's not what we're asking for. But we can't weigh down the tech department with all of the different things that we want to do, because there are a lot of ideas out there. A lot of people want to do a lot of different things. It's a very, it's a very dynamic group with a lot of energy and a lot of thoughts. So what we would really like to do is we would like to have our own website, which would be, let's see, which would be located at let me think for a second, it'd be www.hinsdalepathways.org. And what that would basically do is we would have kind of our, our own site that we would be able to put all this information on and it would link to the district sites. The district site on the ELO page would basically have a link to, you know, this website. The website would be totally paid for by grant funds, so we would not see it come out of or asked to be in the district budget. We would follow all of the, all of the current guidelines, you know, that the district has for its own website. And in particular, that would be, you know, you know, all of that information from students, you know, do they have a release to have their image used or have their work used? Any of that same stuff. If they didn't have that permissions, they, you know, their stuff wouldn't be on the website. They wouldn't be featured on the website in any way, shape or form. If they didn't have that permissions, they, you know, their stuff wouldn't be on the website, they wouldn't be featured on the website in any way, shape, or form. It would basically be monitored by the Director of Curriculum Instruction and the ELO Coordinator, you know, so we would have a member of the administration, you know, and district staff that would be overseeing that to make sure that we were indeed following the guidelines that the district set forth in any of its, like, publication policies or any of that, so we wouldn't be going rogue on that in any way, shape, or form. And what we'd be able to do is, we'd be able to create a little bit more of a robust site, we would be able to really tailor it to what we need to do, we would be able to put, you know, link these different platforms on there, display these different assets on there, in particular, like the videography, you know, we could have some of the videography on there. Let me think now, we would I lost my train of thought there for a second, I'm, I'm having a little bit of a senior moment. You know, and basically, so we would be able to update it in a, in a timely fashion, so you know, you wouldn't have to, you know, put in the help desk ticket, then wait, and really just bog down IT, IT is doing so, especially with the rollout of all the one-to-one stuff, we really don't want to bog down, you know, any other school staff or any other school departments with what we want to do with the program, okay? So the main ask here is permission to move forward with that site. Again, it would be paid for with grant funds. If there was something that the board didn't like at one point, it could be shut down, you could just, you know, deactivate it, just pull the site down, you know, turn it off, but that would allow us to reach all of the stakeholders that we wanted to reach, okay, so the first ask is really, you know, will the board give us the approval to do the site, you know, and I do have kind of a sample motion for that near the end of the, end of the proposal. There is a secondary proposal, and there's a reason why I divided these two sections into two different proposals. We do have, Taylor, is it, do we have one student on the advisory team, or is it the two?
We have two high school students on the advisory team, and we're working to bring in an elementary school student for the advisory team as well.
Okay, cool, so I met, I met one of the students at the last, at the last advisory meeting, and we were talking about this a little bit, we were talking about these platforms, and we were talking about this communication, and how do we get the word out, and you know, some social media stuff like, like Facebook and stuff, you know, the, you know, the parents are really on, the students not so much on Facebook, right? So we can put some stuff out through community connections, you know, we can utilize that, we can utilize, you know, parents of Hinsdale School, you know, we, we have some Facebook outlets that we can already put some information out for, but that will take care of the parents, won't really take care of the students. So one of the requests from the student rep was to look at other social media platforms. And I know social media is, is pretty controversial, and you know, typically, you know, the board, myself included, tend to be a little bit conservative with what we do with social media. But if we're looking to reach the students, we really need to go to where the students are, okay? So the two platforms, the two social media platforms that were suggested by our student rep were Instagram and TikTok. And we know, and, and it seemed when TikTok was mentioned, it was like, oh, so I did that cringe, right, because we you know, because, yeah, it's, it's got a lot of bad press, it's got a lot of them, but my whole thing with, with the Instagram, the TikTok, these, these social media platforms, those are the ones that the kids are using, you know? They would still be monitored by a member of the administration, which would be the Director of Curriculum Instruction, and they would still have input from the ELO Coordinator, as well as individual staff members who are on the advisory team, who could help create, monitor, edit, make sure that the messages that we'd be putting out were, were positive, so we would be controlling that narrative as opposed to kind of fielding the results of a less than positive narrative from other people, right? So we would kind of be controlling the messages that we were putting out. So the secondary act, ask is that we are able to move forward with a couple of different social media platforms and, and work on that, and again, if that's something that started to go sideways, or the board saw something that was like, ah, no, that, that's, that's too cringe-worthy, that we would be able to shut down, you know, pretty much right away, if we could just, you know, basically turn it off, you know, essentially. So again, the goal is to try to reach our different stakeholders. And again, you know, with the social media part, our stake, our student stakeholders, that's where they are, you know, so how to reach them, going to where they are in order to get the message across, and create awareness of the program and the career pathway awareness opportunities for students with all of our stakeholders. So the, the two, the two asks here, and I did separate them, because I didn't necessarily want them tied together, because there may be mixed opinions on it, would be, first, to be able to have a separate site of our own, and then the second one, to be able to test out a couple of social media platforms, and hopefully move forward with that to get the message out to students. So that's, that's kind of what I have, Taylor, did you want to add anything to that?
I think you did a great job explaining it. You know, I think the, the biggest thing is, we have this terrific grant, and within that grant, being such a small school district, we can use those funds to reach so many students, and I think we're in a, a unique position. A lot of the other districts that received this, this grant are, are huge, huge districts, and the funds are only going to really be utilized on a small population of the student body. You know, our hope is that this grant reaches K through 12, and that's, you know, no one else can say that who has received this grant. You know, and we want to make sure that everyone in our community knows that these opportunities are available, so that they can bring their ideas forth, and the, the most students that we can reach is our, is our goal. And having that out there is really important to make that happen.
Okay, does, um, thank you, Taylor and Sean, thank you very much. Does anybody have any other questions or comments, I don't know if we want to hear from IT, if, if, I assume Deb is probably there, so if we want to hear from her about the website and the social media piece and/or whichever.
I have nothing to add, this is the first I'm hearing anything about this college, so I have no comment about it at this time.
Okay, um, I was gonna say, it's in the packet, I know it's not much, I mean, Sean basically explained it really well, so there's not, not really any additional information, because he really hit everything, but, um, so, okay, so does anybody else have any questions? Or comments?
So as far as like how this progresses, would this become part of a regular monthly reporting back to the, to the school board? I mean, would be like, would a committee be set up for it, or would be part of the curriculum reporting, or?
I would, I would think, and I could talk to Karen about it, but I would think the most appropriate place for any kind of updates would be in her report. I think that would be the best way to do it.
Anybody else, Julia or April?
I will, I will admit to cringing at the social media platforms based on a lot of recent feedback we've had on recent events and TikTok and how it was handled by the school board, we just actually spoke to the, about this recently in the meeting about communication, so I am very hesitant, I, I think the website is appropriate and a great platform that can be monitored closely and managed by us. I have very, very large reservations in the current state of affairs with social media and any platform being used or something for the kids.
April, did I see your hand?
Yeah, I'm curious, and as far as the social media aspect of it, will, like, comments will be turned off? When posting, is it gonna be open to everybody, is it gonna be private to Hinsdale students, is it, like, what's the idea behind it? More specifically?
So the idea behind it is really, is kind of student to student with, with adult guidance, essentially, so they really it'd be different from like the Community Connections Facebook page, where we're putting out a district message and not accepting feedback. So what we would be doing is, we'd be trying to guide the narrative, but part of that kind of needs to be a little bit of back and forth, so that students can ask questions of other students. So it wouldn't have the same restrictions, it would absolutely be monitored, and it would be monitored, you know, pretty closely, again, by the Director of Curriculum Instruction, the ELO Coordinator, and if there was an advisory member who was like a staff member was working with that student creating that message, so it would be pretty closely monitored. Taylor, is that kind of, is that, that's, if you want to, if you want to expand upon that?
Yeah, the feedback that we got from our, you know, student representatives on the board is that they love the idea of a website, and we can make that as real time as possible, but that social media has a little bit more immediate, real-time feel. You know, the kids that are a part of ELOs and a part of these career pathways right now, you know, they have one really big exhibition day at the end of the year, where they get to, you know, really show off all that they've done. But they're excited about what they're doing all year, and they, they really want to be able to show the community all the great things that they're doing as they're doing it. So I think that that was the thought behind it.
So are they looking to make it like public? Or are they looking to make it like a group? That's my question.
I'm not, I'm, yeah, I don't have really a lot of experience with Instagram, and I don't have any experience with TikTok, so I don't know.
Instagram, you can make private versus public, you know, kind of thing, I'm assuming TikTok, I don't, I don't know a whole lot about TikTok either, but my daughter uses it, and I'm on it, mind you, but, you know. I'm not sure that's as controllable as Instagram could be, that's my hesitation with TikTok.
Interesting, Instagram could certainly be set, you know, if, if we have a private setting, that can be set towards private, and students can just invite you know, their classmates, you know, so it stays more local, and even if it's something where and again, I just don't have a whole lot of experience with TikTok, and I'm gonna, and Taylor can probably confirm this, right, because I, because we had it on Zoom, so my, I didn't, wasn't wearing the face mask, my face was there. I think I had the same cringe that Julia had. Because as soon as it was, I was like, oh! You know, but just trying to, you know, trying to think in terms of, you know, reaching a, a platform that they're using, you know, but I absolutely have that, that same cringe.
Mr. Free Tag has a, has a question.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
I'm not very familiar with TikTok or Instagram, those are applications a student would use on their phone, not their laptop?
Yeah, I believe.
Well, we don't, am I correct that we don't use TikTok and Instagram on school? No, so, that would create community conflict.
Alright, so, yeah, it wouldn't be school hours, and that's something where the where the adults, alright, would be working with the students to say, here's when you can do it, and here's where you can't, you know, so they'd be teaching a little, hopefully, anyway, teaching a little bit of responsible social media use.
Holly, there is a message in the chat.
Yeah, yeah, I saw that from Teresa, I just have one quick question before, and then definitely we would want to hear from Teresa, since she's on the committee. So, um, hold on, let me just close that, okay, so, yeah, so my, my one question, huh?
I was doing the same thing, I was closing it, as you were saying, I gotta close.
I know, I'm like, wait, let me close it, hold on, because I'm not distracted by it. But, um, so you, so my, my thing was with, with, with the social media piece too, is, well, I have two, two things with the, the website and the social media, so with the social media, even if it's being monitored, and even if they just invite other students and stu-, you know, it could, comments could probably still snowball, because, you know, you can't, unless you shut comments off, you can't be watching every second of the day. And it probably would be different if it's just students commenting, and they're all in the ELO group, you know, and they're all grouped together, but and the piece about the website, I would just, I, I don't want to hold anything up or anything, but I, I would, I, I don't know how anybody else feels too, but I would like to have more input from IT if we're gonna go the website route, you know what I mean?
My only thing with that is IT's not involved in it, 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 and that, that's the whole point, you know, is to have it aside from them, so that they're not burdened by anything.
That's right, so it links it to.
This is, this is us, the only thing we would be asking of IT is to put a link on the ELO page, that's it.
Okay, so I don't know, we have to look into with what, if, if, if there's anything to consider, I don't know, in the larger, I, I don't know, IT stuff to consider, um, if, when we link out to stuff, like, I'm, I'm sure, we must link maybe, I, I don't know, but if we link to the CDC or this or that, like, you know, I mean, different things, like, what, what do we have to? You know what I mean, we have to be aware of what we're linking to, that's all, I just.
Yeah, but that's, but that's what we're approving, hopefully approving, is, is, is that, is that where, this is gonna be a, it's following the district guidelines, it's not, you know, it's, 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 it basically, almost like an extension of what the school's doing, right, so we're doing, we're still following all of the same, you know, school rules, and not burdening IT, you know, putting a link up there is a two-second thing, but if we're trying to make something dynamic, and we're saying, hey, we want that on the district website, I know Deb and Justin are fully capable of doing it, right, but, you know, are our page is gonna support that, and as we update in a timely fashion, we could almost put in as many as help desk tickets on our own website, you know, you know, if they were on the school site, as they get for other equipment, and that's not fair to them, it's just simply not fair.
Yeah, no, I would just meant that if, um, no, I know it would be easy for them to put the link up, but when we, and I don't know, and this could be a question for Deb, I guess, it, do we have links to outside websites, and what's our responsibility, I understand this is sort of a school kind of thing, so school people will be running it, you know, the Director of Curriculum and different ELO, ELO Coordinator, but you know what I mean, what's our, what's our responsibility as a district, saying, here's a link to you go out with, we're providing you with it, does that make any sense?
Yeah, so, you know, our website has, you know, links to, you know, several other things, and I honestly, I don't see how this would be different. But the other thing too is, if that, if that would hold up a vote, because we're essentially already dealing, you know, year two of this five-year grants, we kind of have to get something going, we have to get, it's, it's, the grants, it's a requirement of the grant, you know, to have this system up in place, you know? And if it was a question of holding up a, you know, holding up a vote, the link on the website, we can easily do this without the link on, on the district website and still get the word out. So if that was the holdup, we would do it without the link and review it later, and you'll then request a link be put up on the ELO page, but we can work without a link on the district website. But the important part is that we're able to do, able to start getting our word out there to our stakeholders.
Yeah, I'm totally in favor, do you see my point, my question though, I just want to make sure, if we're putting it up there and directing people to it, what do we have to think about?
Oh, sure.
And it might not be anything, it might be like, oh, no, there's no concern from an I.
I mean, with, with some things, and I think Deb will agree, you know, with some things, you know, linking out to some of these different sites would be like, oh my God, no, don't do that, the liability could be huge, or it just could be completely inappropriate. It might not be, you know, secure, all these different things. Yes, so, so, yeah, no, it would be, it would be different from that, but if there was that concern, then like I said, we could just you know, not link it to the website, and that would be totally fine.
Deb had something.
Um, I guess my big question is, who is the owner of the domain?
Well, that's actually a really good question.
Well, it's an important question, because if it's the district, then this is, this is all for nothing, you know, the, the conversation is moot. But if it's someone other than the district, then, you know, it's a good conversation to have.
Okay, so the moot conversation, alright.
Well, I think she means it's moot.
Because if the district owns it, then we don't need to worry about that, do we, we don't even have to have the conversation, because we own sau92.org, and we own hnhsd.org. If we as a district own hinsdalepathways.org, I mean, you know, the grant's gonna go away someday, and the district's gonna probably absorb some of this, I would think down the line, you still would want to be doing this. So, you know, it doesn't cost a lot for a domain name, but somebody's got to be the technical contact for it, somebody's got to be the administrator, I mean, that's how domain names work. So if the district So if the district is the owner of it, then we, I I mean, I don't have any problem putting in whether the district owns it or not, quite frankly. Cause we do it, but, um, it it. It just seems like that would be neater neater and tidier for us.
So if it's being paid for by, and and Deb, you can help you talk me through this, because if it's being paid for by the grant that's coming into the district for the ELO program. Um, it seems like, it seems like you would be correct that the district would own it. So me personally, right, and I'm just, uh, you know, being on this advisory team and being on the board. Um, and in the conversation with Karen, you know, I would want to make sure that we were continuing to look for grant funding to pay for this because I really don't want this in the budget. Um, that was a a big part of it. So, yeah, we have, uh, you know, five years paid for, which is great. And then to be continuously looking forward for more funding for it. Part of the hope of. Of the way we're creating this communication plan, that we were kind of creating, uh, this presence for this career pathways awareness thing. Is that, uh, we're really impressing the people that have given us the grant, kind of impressing the feds. And, uh, we do have the intention of continuing to seek more money essentially for it.
But since the district is the, um. Is the fiscal agent for the grant. Then they, in in my opinion, they are the ones that are the owners of the, um, domain name.
Yep, I I think I.
Then it's ours and there we go. Put it on the website, done. Right? I mean, they just follow the same rules that we do, you know, we don't, we don't have, we don't have anything for SAU ninety-two, but. We can't let nobody else is gonna get that either.
Right, and I believe I said we'd be following district policy, I'm pretty sure.
Right, yeah, you did.
Okay.
So I'm not sure about that financial thing though, right? Because HE, uh, well, HASP, we're the financial. Agent for HASP, but we don't own. HASP, right? That's state and a federal thing.
And we we. We own it. The money comes from the feds through the state to us.
But we don't have a a a domain name.
No, no, no.
But we could use it. I mean, we could apply for it. Like, since we've been sitting here, I've looked, I went into GoDaddy and. That no domain name is available. Hindustan Pathways dot org is available to buy.
I I researched it, I know.
Teresa's still there.
Yeah, I was just gonna say if there was no, if there was no other questions, yeah, go to Teresa. Teresa?
Hold on, um. Can you hear me? Okay, perfect. Um, so first of all, I want to thank. Taylor for being there and really kind of like. Explaining some of the things that we've talked about and obviously Sean, Sean, you've done an awesome job. I think that in terms of the social media piece, I I know that was one of your concerns. Um, what we talked about at the last meeting was how to engage students. And yes, TikTok and Instagram. Um, with everything that's been going on is is a concern and like Sean said, like he instantly, like.
You you were there.
I think I was the one who actually said, like, you know what, a way that we can reach a kid is is TikTok. And maybe it's not necessarily having a TikTok. Um, account at this point, but having the students being allowed to be able to make TikToks. To show them what different opportunities that are being like out there and that we could do in the school. Um, a lot of schools, believe it or not, actually have TikTok accounts, um, that they're using in a variety of different ways. To just promote their programs. So. Schools have this, like in the arts program, schools have this in the guidance program to say like, these are the little things that are going on. Um, and they do have public accounts. I don't know at this point, like if it's necessarily. That realm that we need to do it, but if we were able to start it very slow and small. And I think the first, the first way is through to having this, you know, separate. The, I'm sorry, the separate, uh. Web address and in the separate account and everything so that we can promote it that way. But then just to be able to reach students in on a bigger level because they are there. Um, that's what they're looking at. That's what they're seeing every single day. Um, whether, and I know the school district does have the Instagram account. Um, and. Obviously, as Sean mentioned, that would be monitored and everything through, um, the CIA. Uh, but I I think some of it might just be like, maybe it's baby steps. Maybe it's just be able to create some of the videos and post some of the videos to the account and then maybe if that works well. Then to be able to have an actual account. Um, and again, I don't know for for certain, um, but we had that first, that last, I shouldn't say first, we had that last meeting. Then the student representatives came to me and they're like, that's a great idea and had, they were like blown up with all these other things that they could possibly do. Um, so I thi- I mean, I don't think that we're asking for the world. I think it's it's a small piece of maybe what we could do. And to take baby steps and maybe get there eventually. Um, and Deb, I totally appreciate your comments too, because I didn't realize that you weren't aware that some of this was coming down the pike. Um, so I don't know, that's that's what I have, but I'm more than willing to answer any questions. Um, I'm familiar with TikTok, Instagram. So I guess that's where I'm at.
Thank you, Teresa. Does anybody have any social media? Maybe Teresa can address some concerns. About TikTok, so, yeah.
Can I make a comment about Instagram though? I can't speak to TikTok, but I can tell you we've had our Instagram account for quite a few years. And I think, um, for the most part, pe- people have been very respectful. On there, um, I've come to not allow comments lately because I can't monitor it every step of the way. And I don't want to have to to deal with, um. Having to shut somebody down. I don't want to be in that position, so I just turn commenting off and it's more to showcase what we're doing. Again, you know, that telling our own. Story, we've talked about that for years. And I think that's what it sounds like you guys are trying to do. You want to tell. Your own story and share it with other kids and I would be sad if you made it a private group because I think that kind of defeats the purpose of what your goal. Goal is. Like I said, I don't know enough about TikTok, um. Other than the negative things that I hear about TikTok. Um, so I can't speak to that, but I think. Uh, our experience with our school Instagram account has been a good one and that might be a good. Step in the right direction to start there. And then take your baby step into TikTok, but that, you know, obviously that's up to the board, but I'm just telling you. You know, I'm the one who's managed, um, the social media accounts for the district and. I I it it's, it's been easy, it really has. Um, and the kids are not on Twitter. They are. On Instagram. Twitter is for the parents. For the kids, so.
Yep, thank you, Deb. Yeah, I I and I agree, I I want, you know, I'm subscribed to the ins- to schools Instagram and. It is really, it's like, it's kind of the opposite of Facebook. It's very, very respectful, so. Um, but no, I like Teresa's, um, suggestion and Deb's too, you know, about baby steps. Um, if if we're if we're comfortable with Instagram, you know. And then maybe learning more. I mean, definitely, I think it's a learning process. I mean. I think the board just needs to be educated a bit more about, or or a lot more, because we don't know anything about, except for the bad TikTok challenges is all we know, so. Yeah, maybe if we can just, yeah, do the baby steps. That that's, I like that idea, so. Anybody else? Um, any other questions for Sean? And then which motion do we want to go with number one or two?
Yeah, I'm asking for both.
Yeah, that's right. You're right. Yeah, you're right. Yeah, you're right. I'm sorry.
I'm interested in hearing what Jan has to say about this.
Well, no, I I my question was about the, um. Instagram, TikTok, does that mean we're saying kids are gonna be on their phones during the school day? That was my question.
I hope not. I wouldn't want that.
Well, it creates conflict if that's what we're gonna do. That's all.
Well, they shouldn't have their phones out, right? They should be in the locker. To be in the lockers.
Right, but if you do this, it's like saying you can, but you can't.
You said a restriction that they're only gonna be using it at their ELO or in their in. Or whatever, yeah.
Right, you know, and and the purpose of the grant is out of school time career pathways, so, you know.
Oh, yeah, it's in the title.
Well, yeah, while, you know, some of that does overlap a little bit because of our ELO program and that we do have that already. You know, the the majority of the goals of the grant are to happen out of school time.
Yeah. I don't know, I guess if it becomes a problem, I I mean, I I I don't know if you would catch that many kids on it, but if it becomes a problem where we see kids interacting during the school day, then. We'll have to revisit it.
I'm going to tell you, they do do it during the school day because, you know, I monitor the Instagram account and when the kids are liking it. They're in class. I'm sorry, that's my idea.
Yeah.
You know, and if it becomes a problem, then we do something different or shut it down. Um, yeah, I think both, hold on one second, both. Think. Both proposals, you know, retain the board's right to shut it down at their discretion at any point in time. Um, where is? Motion. Do 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 the site. Followed. Alright, so I think the, uh, I think the shutting down at any time is, uh, for the social media, but it could certainly be added to the other as well. If that, if that was. If that was requested by the board.
Yeah, your your sample motion says to discontinue the use of these, but at any time for any reason, so, yeah. Okay, so does anybody else have any questions for?
I I have a comment. You know, because Deb, in supporting Instagram. Um, also made a comment that I had to turn comments off because I couldn't monitor it nonstop. But we know that the ELO supervisor and the people on our staff, hopefully they're doing a lot more than this monitoring. Instagram for this social media platform, so, um, the only way I could would. Be at all on board with any social media is if we started with Instagram only with no comments. But I don't know that 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 defeats your purpose because you're trying to create communication. Amongst the students, but something that cannot be monitored, something that allows for. Social media interaction right now, I think as a board or certainly for me personally. With everything that's happened with social media and the perception of. How this school district and how others handle the social media that's out there. I don't think we have enough, we could, we could offer tight enough controls at this moment and. On at this time to, I personally can't support a social media platform right now.
I mean, I'm. Absolutely in favor of having the comments shut off. Um, you know, I think if. If the vision of what we're doing is out there, then the conversation in person can occur. Um, within our community because it is a small community, um, and hopefully that that word can then spread.
And it would be a baby step. Create the account, no comment, see if they're using it, see if there's pushback. Hey, we can't comment, we're not gonna use it. But I I would support the creating of the account as the initial baby step.
Anything else from anybody? Right, then we just need a motion or two motions. How is this broken up, Sean? Two motions?
I broke it up into two because I didn't necessarily, knowing that the social media would be the, um, probably, you know, the more. I don't want to say controversial, I don't want to use that word, but the the part that would spark the most conversation, how about that? Um, I wanted to separate them so they weren't tied together to give the board, um, options to let us do what we need to do. Uh, within their greatest comfort level. How does that sound? Politically correct.
There you go.
Kind of great, Sean. So I'll make a motion to accept, um, we'll do the the first one for the website. To make the motion for them to give permission. Is that the right motion?
Yeah, so it's a permission for, uh, the OSTCP advisory team to create a standalone website for the purposes. Stated in this presentation with the understanding that all district policies on electronic presence followed. This site to be under the direct supervision of the Director of Curriculum Instruction and the District's ELO Coordinator. Expenses tied to this site would be paid out of grant funds.
Yeah, that motion. Just kidding.
Alright, a second. Somebody need a second?
I'm in supporter of the website.
Okay, right, any further conversation? Okay, all those in favor of motion number one, say aye, um, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes. Um, what about the second piece about, um, the social media?
The second part reads, at least as here, and we can, we can amend this, obviously. Um, the second part reads, permission for the OSTCP advisory team to employ social media to reach the student body regarding ELO opportunities. As stated in this presentation, these platforms to be under the direct supervision. Of the Director of Curriculum Instruction and ELO, the District's ELO Coordinator. The board reserves the right to discontinue the use of these platforms at any time for any reason.
Okay, does anybody want to make that motion and?
I like to make the motion. To change to employ social media to say to employ Instagram.
Instagram, okay. And start with that? And start with Instagram.
Oh, with, well, to start with no comments.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, so. Just making my notes that I'll read it back.
Okay, so I'll make a call second.
So then the motion would read, um. Permission for the OST TCP advisory team to employ Instagram with commenting turned off to start. Um, to reach the student body regarding ELO opportunities as stated in this presentation. These platforms to be under the direct supervision of the Director of Curriculum Instruction and the District's ELO Coordinator. The board reserves the right to discontinue the use of these platforms at any time for any reason.
Yeah.
No, yes, this, yeah. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of that motion say aye, so yes?
Yes.
Aye.
Yes, yes.
Great, thank you. Motion passes.
Alrighty.
Um, thank you, Sean and Taylor and Teresa and Deb, uh, for your inputs. Um, okay, uh, next up is discussion regarding budget. Um, so Wayne and Jody, um, I'll just throw in quick, we have, uh, uh, thank you all. For participating in the joint budget meeting, um, and thank you for Jody and and the, um, administrators who. Beforehand got answers to the questions the Budget Committee had sent ahead of time, um. And I also just want to add that we have a Budget Committee meeting. Next Tuesday on the nineteenth, and I've asked, um, Jody to go with me. Generally, Tom would go with the Budget Committee rep. Um, to the, it would, this is likely to be the last Budget Committee meeting before the hearing, which, um, is on the. Hold on a second, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, the nineteenth is the meeting and then the budget hearing is on, um. Oh, gosh, I don't have it written down in my calendar. I think it's the second, Wednesday, the second was the snow date of the third. But I'll double check that for you guys unless you have it April.
I don't have that.
Okay, yeah, we had talked about it at the last, uh. Budget meeting, yeah, and I I I didn't get it in my calendar, but, um, so so likely the next week will be the last, like, meeting to go over the school budget. So, um, like I said, Tom, at least when I've been budget rep in the past, Tom has attended with me, so that way. We don't have any lag time in getting some stuff answered, so that he can, you know, Jody could answer, uh, a- any of the additional questions that come up that night, so. So Jody and, uh, Wayne, if you have any other budget stuff you want to talk about?
Well, well, that pretty much wrapped up what I was gonna say, Holly. I just, um, I really appreciate everybody, uh, coming last week and. And especially the folks who are off in the other room. Um, it was good to have, it was good to have everybody here to answer the questions. I thought we had a very positive meeting. Um, and I'm I'm hopeful that we can get a vote next week.
Yep, I've I've, uh, I'm gonna reach out to them this week, um, you know, tonight or tomorrow and ask them if they had any further questions, um. You know, to do like last time, send them ahead, and of course, they can have questions that night, but just to try to get ahead of anything that needs some, uh, research, so.
Yep, that's great.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so next we have a final reading of, um, policies EEAF, EE, I'm sorry, it needs to be closer to my 48-year-old eyes. EEAE, EEARE, EEG, FAA, and TB, PD, that's a final reading. So did you see the motion to approve those as a final reading?
I will make that motion.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on those policies? Okay, all those in favor of approving those as a final reading, say aye. So, I'm sorry, was there discussion I missed?
No.
No, okay. Um, so, yes?
Yes.
Aye.
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 Okay, great, thank you. All right, then, uh, we have a group for first reading, um, policies GBI, IB, IG, IHBG, IHCD slash LEB. A little bit of a twist there. So, um, need a motion to prove those as a first reading?
I will make that motion.
A second.
Any discussion on those? Okay, so then all those in favor of approving those as a first reading, say aye. Uh, yes?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Great, thank you. Um, other business, does anybody have any other business? Sean?
I don't think so.
Okay, Jim?
Uh, yeah, the agenda says old business, but it should be other business, right?
I don't know, I think it usually, I don't, I don't know.
I don't know, I just noticed it, but I, I thought it's not a business, not old, but.
You have like, you have like three meetings left, Jim, and you noticed.
I have a couple of things. One is some things with, um, the Hinzdale Education Foundation, but I'll do that, uh, at the end as, um, citizen comment. Um, and the other thing is, um, just want to recognize again that we had, uh, Megan Roberts is the MUR, uh, home, uh, hometown hero. That was kind of happening right during the last school board meeting, so she was on, uh, WMUR is very good, very, uh, nice, uh, event there. Um, but I'll say it now, I just wanted to note that, uh, Josie Marshall passed away. Um, alumni, I'm not, I'm sure mostly probably had, you know, newer. Um, and so I thought it might be appropriate, uh, to have a moment of silence, but yeah, for Josie.
Great, thank you, Jim, for suggesting that. And, and you know, of course, all of us, you know, we're also, you know, close to Leo and the family and, and our hearts go out to the Marshalls. Thank you, Jim.
Yeah.
Did you have anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, Julia?
No.
Uh, April?
Nope.
Um, I have a couple of things, so, um, oh.
The bleachers, we wanted just to make sure we were okay, and I don't know, Jody, we didn't make any change with that, right?
Um, no, we didn't.
All right, so.
We have, um, three different quotes from two different companies. Um, and, and Sam indicates that what he'd like to see is two long sets of benches on either side rather than the four. And the reason for that is to keep the seating capacity the same as what we have now at 400.
I was going to bring it up during facilities, but I mean, uh,
Yeah.
we can defer it to then, or to you, Holly, if you want to discuss that further now.
I mean, whichever, if you guys want to discuss it, that's, that's fine. I had it, Wayne had asked beside that one under other business, so we, we can discuss it now. That's fine.
Okay, so, uh, I think the, the issue was that at the facility meeting, uh, wasn't quite apples to apples. There were different nuances to the quotes. Um, so I don't think we had the exact final numbers, but I'll refer you guys if, if you can present that.
Yeah, we've got a, a number of quotes. Um, as I said, we've got three, three quotes from two companies, and within some of the quotes, there's a variety of options, so, um, again, Sam wants to have two long sections, one on each side, in order to keep the capacity. Uh, the way the seating comes, it's a little bit wider, thank goodness. Um, and it's ADA compliant, and so you lose some seating, which we would gain back if by having it one long one. So he's also thinking that we may need to have, um, electric, um, you know, automation to have it go in and out because otherwise it would just be too unwieldy to, to manage. Um, and we've got a question that we still need to figure out. The answer is that could we dismantle the bleachers on our own? So while in the draft warrant, I, I wrote for it, um, to raise it appropriate the sum up to 85,000. Uh, that includes about $55,000, $5600 to remove the current bleachers. And we need to talk with Sean to see if that's something that he and his team can do over the summer. Maybe hire a couple of high school kids over the summer and dismantle them on our own. So, we, we, we're still trying to bring that down, but we'll see.
So my notes from that conversation are bleachers are approximately 53 years old. We had three bids. Julia thought she might be able to do some work on that. I don't know if you.
I haven't yet, but I will.
Okay, so Julia was doing some more work on that. Uh, right now, we have to have the bleachers inspected annually at a cost of 17, 80 per year. Uh.
There's current outstanding for almost 10,000.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, continue.
The ex, the expense, the quote to repair it.
Oh, the quote to repair it is, is $10,000.
Our latest inspection came with a quote for needed repairs of $10,000. So I think presented with the needed repairs now from our current inspection of $10,000 plus the minimum $2,000 annual inspection cost. And the fact that they're so old, I think the warrant could be approached that way as the ROI being, uh, a bit less shorter be, due to the, you know, the money that needs to be spent right now on repairs. I, what Jim was referring to for me is I am going to, um, check and see that perhaps as a furniture dealer, I can try to purchase some of these items directly without needing to go through another dealer that's going to mark them up. So, um, there's a possibility that we could save some funds that way if, uh, I could establish a relationship as a vendor for one of these manufacturers. So I will investigate doing that.
Uh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I was just saying Sean's, I think hand was up.
Yeah, if I'm remembering correctly from, uh, past facilities meetings, uh, the, uh, and this may be something that we can, um, also speak to when people have questions at town meeting. If I'm not mistaken, um, that inspection fee for the bleachers, uh, the way, the repair fee for the bleachers, you know, has been going up, you know, it seems like, I don't, I was several years on facilities, and it seemed like it went up a little bit each time, and it sounds like, and that was mostly because the wells were breaking, you know, so they'd have to like, you know, redo the wells and stuff like that, so, um, you know, i- i- if we're finding that even more wells are breaking and that, you know, uh, maintenance cost is going up year after year after year, I think that, um, you know, i- it's just, um, more proof that we need a replacement.
Yeah, absolutely. Jim?
Yeah, so, um, we mentioned that we were going to have a discussion with Sean about dismantling a seat. We thought we could perhaps repurpose the wood on those seats for, do some good with that, so, uh, maybe some awards, maybe coach, you know, I know Terry got coached the year, something like that. Maybe give a, a piece of the benches to anybody who's in the, um, what is it, uh, thousand point club?
Yeah.
We have several students.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, or to the families of the those athletes. Uh, we do have that metal dumpster that's, uh, been out in back of the elementary school. We thought maybe we could use that for, uh, for the metal that comes out of there. Um, the PTA, I don't know if we had any further input regarding PTA fundraiser on that. I don't know.
Yeah.
Oh, the PTA, I thought we were doing that.
PTSD is older for.
It's the high school.
Oh, okay, so it was PTSD, I'm sorry.
They're doing the fundraising at the games because we haven't had.
Can't have the fans. That's usually, that's when they do their 50s, 50s, and they sell the food and do all that stuff. That's how they do the majority of their fundraising, you know. So fortunately, they've been unable to do that with COVID.
So that might, I don't know, that might play in there somewhere as well, so that was, uh, the facility aspect of the bleachers.
And I, and I also want to point out that it's, it's both a safety issue and a ADA compliance issue.
Safety is, is huge concern based on the inspection, anyway.
It is.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, for anything else on that, are we? All right, great, thank you. I know, um, Joe had, um, in, in a item for other business, um, about the PTA and an addition, a safety addition to our website, so a request from the PTA. I might have gotten that a little bungled, so it was a close to that, Joe?
Yeah, so, um, we're still not having in-person PTA meetings, but we are continuing to have our PTA executive meetings. And funny, we talked a little bit about TikTok tonight, but the, the TikTok challenge rose the question with the PTA Executive Board parents as to what parents should do in an emergency. Um, so I referenced that we have a letter that we can send home and just wanted, didn't want to just send that home without the board's approval and making sure that, uh, you know, everybody understands where it's coming from as to try and inform people best, and then also to, uh, not only send the letter home, uh, but to have it posted on the website so people can see it that, you know, in the case of an emergency, here's what expectations are for parents. That was developed by the years, few years ago by the Committee for the Emergency Operation Plans.
I was going to say, do you guys have that there? Because I don't know if we got it.
I think Joe sent that out to the facilities members because we discussed it on Friday. You want to send a draft? So I think it was just got sent out, the first draft just got sent out to those of us who met and discussed it on Friday.
Okay.
I do, I do have a copy here, Holly, but I just, it's been a day.
Oh, yeah, yeah, definitely. So do we want to, um, you know, put it on the agenda for next, next month?
Or?
I think, you know, this is something that's been in the emergency plan and been approved. I just didn't want people blindsided by it. I think it, if parents are asking, what should we do? I don't think we should delay on it.
No, but I mean, if, if somebody could read it at least, so Sean and I could hear it.
That would be nice.
Or screen share, maybe, or, well, no, you don't have it. Yeah, there, yeah, just read it. Okay.
All right, so, if an emergency, oh, dear parents, if an emergency or disaster situation ever arises while your child is in school, please be aware that our school has been, has made preparations to respond effectively. Our school district has a detailed plan that has been formulated to respond to a large or small emergency and includes evacuation to an offsite location. This plan has been developed in conjunction with local emergency management teams. Decisions to keep students at school or at an offsite location will be based upon recommendations from our local responders. In the event our students are evacuated to an offsite location and we have permission to dismiss them, we will release students only to parents or the person or persons who has, you, you have specified on their registration sheet you completed at the beginning of the school year. Please keep this information up to date throughout the year. In such situations, you should expect our dismissal process to be tightened to ensure student safety. Please be patient if staff members ask you for identification or you need to wait a few extra minutes. Be sure to have identification available. Be assured your child's safety is of paramount importance to us. Our entire staff is trained to respond to emergencies in a calm, reassuring manner. You can help us in an emergency situation by adhering to the following. Uh, then it's a bulleted list. So bullet one, do not telephone the school. All telephone lines may be needed for emergency communication with police, fire, and other emergency personnel. Bullet two, do not come to the school unless, until requested. During an emergency, access to the school must be kept clear for emergency vehicles. By self responding to the school, you may jeopardize the safety of your child. Bullet three, do not call or text your child's cell phone. Not only can cellphone connections create an unsafe electrical charge in the case of a bomb threat, but conflicting and unconfirmed information is better left to be sorted by the adults on site. Uh, bullet four, final bullet, be sure your chi, uh, your child or children understand the need to follow the directions of any school personnel. Failure to do so may result in disciplinary action. Although no one likes to dwell on emergency situations, we believe their planning ahead will help alleviate additional stress and concern. You might want to assure your children that whether they are at home or at school, the adults in their lives are there to keep them safe. Please feel free to call me if you have any questions regarding our plans sincerely.
And that is part of the emergency plan of the district that's filed with the department's education.
Okay, great, thank you. So, um, so basically, this is just like a, a heads up, it's already, and, and I, and I agree with Joe, it's already like in there, um, been approved, so just to send it out to parents because it's on everybody's mind, so discussion on that.
Because of what just happened with the TikTok and because of everything else, everybody's nerves are a little frayed. I think it's nice to just send out a little refresher to everybody that we got everything covered and planned for and the safety of the students.
Yep. Any other discussion about that? I do want to say, oh, sorry, Jim, go ahead.
I had a note that we had, uh, we thought maybe, uh, this goes to a broader conversation, but we thought maybe a tech representative on the facility committee might be a good idea. Uh, so I'm looking at that, but it wouldn't have to be you, but, you know, you designate on as an ongoing basis, and I was going to bring it up for facility, but it's also part of this. And, but maybe perhaps, uh, a tech representative might have some input on, uh, when there's a representative, representative that's at facilities.
No, that's a good, that's a good question, a good point, Jim. So does the board, if we wanted that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
There's a lot of overlap between technology and what goes on in facilities. I mean, I just saw the C, C plan for the first time, and there's all this stuff listed for technology, and I never knew that. So, you know, I, it, it, there is overlap because of how the departments worked. I told you all, I'm going to retire when it's on the toilets, but I'm going out earlier than that. And, you know, we're connected, the network is connected to everything, so.
So, so if we want to add a tech representative on that, um, since the facilities committee is a committee of the board, does that, that's just the, a decision of the board, I would think, right, Wayne?
Yes, so I think that what I'm hearing is there's no one who's not in favor of that addition. Okay, so we'll, I'll work with Deb and we'll, we'll pull that together.
Okay, great, thank you. That was a great idea, facilities. Um, I do want to say one thing just in, in this conversation about TikTok that, you know, this last TikTok challenge thing came up, you know, it was like in the afternoon on a Thursday. Um, and then, uh, that Friday morning, um, Ann had sent out kind of a draft communication, and then Sean and I just, you know, because it had to, you know, get, we, we dropped everything. I know I was at work, so Sean did the bulk of it, but he was back and forth with me, and I kind of took my lunch at like 9:00 AM in order to stop everything and work on it and then tried to get it out. So, I mean, it was a really, um, you know, I had to rework it, and it was a, um, you know, what, not last minute, but you know what I mean, it came out late, late in the day on Thursday that it hit the news. I didn't see it till I got home from work at six o'clock that this thing even existed, so, you know, so we do our best, and it, with TikTok, that's one of the things scary about TikTok, it seems to move really fast. So I'm glad we're not doing TikTok right off the bat. Um, I had one thing for other business, um, so I, I, I've heard from a few board members on this, um, not everybody, but I assume everybody got it. Um, we usually don't address anonymous letters, but I talked with Sean and I got some input from Wayne, um, just to let you know that we, you know, we have received an anonymous letter, which was obviously anonymous, we don't know who sent it, and, um, expressing concern about board members being on search committees, um, Um, and that is, you know, legal in New Hampshire. It's, it's, uh, regular practice on boards to be on different search committees, not teacher level, but, um, it's administrative search committees, uh, we do have a few laid out in our SAU manual, but, um, so I just wanted to put that out, that, you know, just clarify that, that it is legal in New Hampshire and, and it is practice on every board. And as a side note, the, uh, information that was in the letter was from the New Jersey School Board Association. So in New Jersey, it doesn't seem to be very legal, but, um, or F, or, or within their framework. But, um, the, the anonymous letter center sender, um, I, it appears, uh, mistyped New Jersey for New Hampshire. So, um, we were, uh, given information about New Jersey, so, school boards. So I just want to put it out there, just so everybody knows that we are not doing anything that is not, um, okay in New Hampshire. Um, all right, so do we, any, but if nobody else has anything for other business, then we'll move on to financial report. Uh, Jody.
Okay, um, so I just want to point out that we did receive the first installment of $50,000 for the OSTCP grant in December, and we've set it up in the system and they considered that our 2021 payment and our 2022 first installment is going to come in around February. Other than that, you have my report and do you have any questions?
Does anybody have any questions for Jody? Okay, thank you, Jody, uh, curriculum? Oh, oh, sorry. Yeah, somebody be my, my eyes out there.
Well, no, it's delayed, uh, response, I, I don't know if you wanted to talk about the hydro rebate number?
Oh, yeah. Oh, well, you don't want to talk about it, you have the numbers there?
Yeah, so, uh, you know, we're, we're still with the hydro rebate program. We get approximately 1,100 per quarter. Uh, but the amount that we get back has increased as of the current agreement to five tenths of a percent. And so that's going to, uh, increase from about 4,400 per year to about 7,700 per year.
Oh, cool. All right, great, no, so I just, I was just writing it down. Awesome, thank you, Jim. All right, um, curriculum, I don't know if Wayne or has anything to share or could answer any questions? If anybody has any questions on Karen's report?
I'm happy to answer any questions for Karen.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay, um, technology?
Thank you, Madam Chair, you have my report. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to address those.
Any questions for Deb? Okay, great, thank you. Uh, principal reports, um, Mr. Freekay?
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, before I ask Mr. Crawford to join us to talk about the program of studies, I just want to put out a big thank you to Peter Hughes and, um, Gina Hammett for, you know, running a national armed society induction in the fall. We haven't had a fall induction for a long time and they picked up the torch for N68 hours of hunger. So I, I think this is a group that really, really speaks well about community connections. They're doing a great job, as you see, 27 backpacks a week and these kids are still working hard. And it's a very small group, so I want to thank them for their hard work in public. Thank you. And Mr. Crawford is here to talk about the program of studies.
Great, um, so I'm glad to be here, um, just like last year. I'd love to just, um, talk a bit about some of the changes that we're proposing for the program of studies and also just outline, um, sort of the process of, uh, how this gets implemented and how students get classes and that kind of thing. Uh, so, uh, you'll see that the, the program, most program of studies is in your packet. Anything that was changed from last year to this year is highlighted in yellow. So I'll just very briefly just kind of walk through some of them, right, obviously some of them are very simple, we changed the year on the front there. You know, it's on page 15 and 16, there's a couple of courses that had, uh, a requirement as a junior or a senior. Just as a scheduling piece, uh, we kind of changed the language on that to, uh, recommend it as a junior or a senior. Obviously, as a small school, we have a lot of, um, challenges, uh, with the restrictions on how we place students. Uh, so it's good to have just a little bit of flexibility there. That's the same thing with, uh, some changes on page 18. So really the main substantial, uh, substantial change is actually on page 24. Uh, we're adding, uh, a machine math course. And, uh, this came to light for a couple of different reasons. One is we found a need to sort of increase and promote, uh, some more diverse math offerings. You know, uh, so there's that part, as well as obviously there's a lot of, uh, work with ELOs and we have a strong connection, um, with a, a machining, a company in the area that we work with, ELOs. And it's just, uh, also just a really great course. Um, additionally with that, um, one of our new teachers, uh, Mr. Bigford, he has a connection with him as well and, and is able to really bring his expertise in on the subject. So him and Peter Hughes kind of put that together. Uh, I think we're really excited to be able to offer, uh, something really apply in mathematics, so. And also something that leads directly into that relationship, uh, which he has presented, so. A couple light changes on, uh, some of the language parts, uh, the world language parts. So, uh, on page 40, uh, the C bowl for French and Spanish. As a previous program of studies, there are sort of blank spots underneath, uh, French five and Spanish five. And that's because, uh, it's really quite similar to the AP course. There's really not a whole lot of difference if you look at the description. Um, one of the main things is, you know, they don't take the AP exam and they're kind of held to a, a lower standard, um, in terms of competencies, uh, but the content is, is very similar. I think that's kind of why it was blank, I thought it was good to have a description in there. So I worked with, uh, our world language teachers to be able to update that. Another slight change on chefs, uh, page 48, just again, uh, students are encouraged to take it as junior or senior, uh, not as required. We got a request from our PE department, just as a language change on page 50. Um, and that was just so that, uh, in that particular program, the individual physical education program, uh, it's really something that's, um, uh, driven by the PE department. They want to make sure that, uh, students are coming meeting with them, uh, and making sure that's approved directly. And then also, uh, for the driver's education, um, you know, we lost our driver's ed instructor and we're not 100% sure of the future or the direction of that particular course or that program. Uh, so we thought it was important to include, of course, must be offered against our high school in order to receive credit. Cause we could kind of see a potential for a kid going to do driver's ed somewhere else and then wanting to get credit, uh, through us and that kind of being potentially complicated. There was a couple of deletions as well, which aren't really highlighted in yellow. Uh, we did, uh, delete the dance program. Uh, I think we had a instructor here, maybe a number of years ago, who's, was pretty competent in that and we just don't really have that capacity at the moment. Let's see, yeah, and, uh, uh, also something we were talking about in the process as well is thinking about certain courses that we only receive a small number of students for. Particularly, we had a little conversation about our AP programs. Uh, we also want to try to increase those numbers. We are a little concerned about, um, you know, uh, having, you know, three, four students in that one class taking up a whole teacher. And so, um, we're really going to try to hold to getting a larger group in that program. Otherwise, we can, uh, we can provide so much more support, uh, for kids, um, in a different section of a, of a base level, of course. So that's just something that we were chatting about as well. Yeah, I think that is about it for changes itself within the program of studies. Before I move on to just process, are there any questions about those changes?
Any questions for Mr. Crawford?
No.
Great, thank you. So just really quickly, I also wanted to give you an idea of a timeline, um, of, uh, the guidance department's process moving forward with course selection, requests, that kind of thing. Um, so obviously, we're hoping to see this program of studies approved today. And in the first two weeks of February, uh, I'll actually be pulling, uh, eighth, ninth, 10th, and 11th grade classes separately, along with their advisors, um, and they'll kind of do the course request process. It's not necessarily what courses they get, uh, but we, we can kind of really gauge interest. And like I said, talking about those AP courses, you can see, oh, wow, there's, you know, 20 kids signed up for this one course. We're definitely going to run this, um, you know, or we might run two sections of this course. Uh, another course that we were planning on running only has one kid signed up or requesting it. So we can kind of push around resources there. That'll happen in the first two weeks of February. Um, and then in March, um, administration and scheduling team, uh, will approve which courses to run. So just like I said, using that information, which courses to run. And, um, I start to run a, a build, what's called a build and load process in Power School. It's, it's basically a way to design the schedule and start placing kids, uh, where they need to be or where they can be. And then, uh, from there, like a final course skeleton is adopted in April. So we kind of meet together, uh, and make sure we really like where each course is placed. And then from there on out, uh, it's just me doing some manual, uh, shifts. Uh, there's, there's, like I said, it's a, it's a small school, so we get quite a lot of work to do to get, um, you know, it's like a big, big puzzle piece to get kids in the right place and, and what they can be in. So that, that kind of happens all the way to June, so, yeah. Any questions on that?
Thank you very much, sweet girl.
Thank you, appreciate it, thanks for having me.
Yeah, great, thank you, Mr. Crawford. I mean, from those of us who've been here a long time, yeah, it is, it's a huge puzzle to try to, in a small school, to get everybody in with what they need. So thank you for all that work. Um, so if there are no other questions, uh, specific questions about the program of studies, we just need a motion to approve it?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, any other further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the programs of studies, say aye, so yes?
Yes.
Aye.
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 Great, thank you. Thank you, uh, Mr. Crawford, and thank you, Mrs. Freekay.
You are welcome, and I just want to extend another kudos tonight, because, you know, Mr. Crawford, like so many people in our building, wears hats of, of many different colors and sizes. Thank you, it's a big part of what he does, but it's not the only thing he does.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, uh, next up, uh, for, um, Mr. Bogio's report.
Thanks, Madam Chair, uh, board has my report and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Bogio? Okay, great, thank you. Uh, superintendent's report, Wayne?
Thank you, Madam Chair, you have my report, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Wayne? No? All right, thank you, Wayne. Uh, okay, committee reports, uh, personnel? Anything, just, you're just getting yourselves ready for district meeting, I'm sure.
Yes.
Considering how you're, how you're gonna word everything.
Considering, uh, making Julia do it all.
And a representative from, from the HFT, as the HSSA did last year and was so very helpful, so hopefully that, that happens. Um, great, yeah, so I'm thinking about budget, what I'm gonna say, because I have to speak for that, so, um, with, uh, Jody and I. So, okay, great, uh, health and wellness, anything?
Uh, nothing yet, but I believe a meeting's, uh, coming, yeah, coming up.
Um, finance budget, we already talked about budget stuff, um, staff development?
We don't have anything to report.
I haven't heard anything.
No, for me, I think I'm supposed to, I gotta look into that. Nothing, nothing to report today.
Yeah, uh, legislation and NHSBA? I don't have anything from the NHSBA from my part, Jim?
Uh, the only thing I have is that, uh, April had brought, uh, House Bill 214. That was discussed at facility, uh, it has been activated again. Uh, Wayne will monitor that at the end of the school year, uh, regarding, uh, construction and renovation allocations.
Great, thank you. Um, has, April, do you have anything?
We meet in April.
Oh, we meet in April, okay.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure, I didn't think there was one today, but I wasn't.
No, I showed up for it, but nobody else did. I had it in my calendar, but apparently I was wrong.
Selectmen, um, you know, it seems like, I, I don't remember, like Jim and I have gone a couple of times. We were mostly talking budget when I was there. I don't really, is Richard there in the room or no?
Yep.
Oh, cool, awesome, so Richard, why don't, why don't you tell us some stuff?
What would you like to hear?
Well, I don't know, what I mean, if, if what I would like to hear is what you're gonna say. Sorry, sorry, getting a little punchy, it's get, you know, it's after, it's after eight o'clock. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's fine, uh, we meet every Monday, so things, water goes over the dip quickly. But yeah, we, uh, we're in the town meeting, we have some openings. Uh, obviously got a meeting next week on the, uh, joint HR committee, uh, looking forward with that. I was wondering too, if I could ask the board, has anybody heard anyone, uh, expressing any interest in running for the moderator position? That's obviously a sensitive position that you wouldn't want to have blank ballot there.
For the what position, I'm sorry?
Moderator. Moderator.
Oh, no, I haven't heard it.
I haven't heard it.
Are you finishing out this year?
Yeah, I, I'm not done until after the end of this, this speaker.
Um, there will be a notice going out, uh, in Friday's paper with the openings. And then that's when we can, um, hopefully start looking for somebody.
Yeah, cause I mean, obviously you don't want that, you know.
No, we don't want a blank ballot.
We don't want a write-in.
Something incredible on the ballot that people did, uh, that obviously isn't, you're gonna decide, they're gonna cast their votes, but you like to have a, you know.
Somebody on the ballot for them to, yeah.
And really, I mean, and if I can be of any help in any way to, if somebody wants to add some questions, I can show somebody in 15 minutes how to run a school board.
Great, thank you. Yeah, thank you, Richard.
Okay.
Um, next up, uh, facilities, did you have any, we kind of touched facilities a couple of times, but.
Yeah, uh, yeah, we touched, we got a lot of it. The, uh, state inspection, uh, should take place on the 24th, uh, it's been postponed a couple of times. Uh, we thought perhaps, um, when we have a new board in place, uh, after the, uh, elections, that, uh, the new members of the school board could do a walkthrough. Um, so we maybe want to think about that come April. Um, we also had a safety improvement, um, with the, uh, district, uh, regarding district key control policy. And the custodians are going to be putting their keys, uh, in a safe box or whatever it is, um, every night, so that they're not taking keys home. They just have their, uh, you know, their plastic key to get in, so. And that'll also help our accountability, right?
It will, because when they use the fob to enter the building, we get timestamps of when they're coming in and they're supposed to fob on the way out as well.
Yeah, so it, it improves not only security, but also, uh, the accountability of, of the hours, yeah. So, that's it.
Great, thank you. All right, community connections, uh, April, did you want to report about anything?
Sure, um, we got a handful of responses to our questionnaire, which was very nice. I'm wondering if, um, we might want to just send out a reminder and maybe give it another week.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, with the holidays and coming back, I think, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, um, but, so I've got a couple, so I'm gonna start formulating, uh, platform for doing this, teacher spotlights on the community connections. And, um, me and Holly will figure that out. And also, uh, from tonight, the, what was it that wanted, there was something that wanted to be on the community, community connections or out for communication? Is that something that we wanted to put on?
Yeah, I think Sean had mentioned, Sean had mentioned throughout. Yeah, I think Sean had mentioned, Sean had mentioned throughout community connections when we talked about the, I think, is what you're talking about, is when the the notices about the changes to the COVID protocols. And, and he mentioned community connections, but we do have the communication plan, which isn't just community connections. So
Right.
So we'll, we'll take a look at that, yeah. And as soon as that's formulated and the board, everyone on the board is, it's gone around the process. Yeah, then definitely, you know, you or I could post it to the Facebook at the same time that Ann is sending out her piece, you know, coordinate it with her.
When, when will the board come up with the information to send out to Karen?
So the way the plan runs, that Julia would craft it, it would be approved by Jim, and then April and Holly would do the posting to community connections, and I would be the backup, is the, is the latest incarnation of that.
Yeah.
About wanting it by Tuesday, yes? Tuesday. So do you want it by Friday?
Well, if we had Friday or Saturday, Friday would be great, but.
Yeah, I don't, see, it's already, it's already, what, eight? Several of us work during the week, so I think Friday might be a little ambitious, but I don't know, if Julia can do it and pass it around, but I just don't want to us to be like Friday, and then that be just too hard to get all done.
So maybe Tuesday, and we hope to get something we can put in place on Wednesday. I mean, I don't think, the issue is just notifying, I don't think there's an issue relative to has to be done on a particular day. We would like, obviously, the earlier the better, but.
We'll try, Jim and I will try to get it through the, through the first rough draft and approving by Friday.
Okay, cool. Yeah, and I have full confidence. I just didn't, you know what I mean, how everybody's.
Appreciate it. I appreciate that. It's a tight timeframe, but I think it's important. It's been a long time since we sent out an official, an official update from the board. I think it's a good time to do so.
Great. Did that answer your question, April? Did I?
Yes.
Did that where you were going? Okay, cool. Awesome. Anything else for community connections?
Not this time.
Okay, thank you. All right, tuition connect committee, we don't have anything. Behavior support?
I think our next meeting is, Wayne, isn't it next Friday, not this Friday, come up the Friday after? Am I correct?
Yeah, I think the 21st, the third, it's the third Friday.
Yeah, that's what I have written down. So, Joe, I'll send you, I mean, we have some standing agenda items, so it's not going to be a hugely different agenda, but I'm away this week, so I'll work on that this weekend and send that over to you.
Okay, I'll distribute.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Joint loss, I know there was a meeting on Monday, and I, there are Mondays at 3:30. I zoom in from work and take my lunch late, and I got on the phone with a customer, and I could not zoom in. So if Ann or, Ann or Ann or Jody or somebody, whoever was there, wants to jump in.
We just discussed accident reports and stuff. We, I sent out the safety manual to everyone to talk about at our next meeting, which is April 2nd. That first Monday, it might not be 4th. And we'll go over that, and if anybody has any evidence, et cetera, I mean.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, citizen comments. So, Ann, we have a couple of people left. Do you want to see if there's any comments?
Mary Whitson, do you have anything? Donna?
I'm all set, thank you.
Karen, Damon?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
How you guys doing? You tired yet?
Oh, yeah.
Like 15 minutes, okay? No, my questions are pretty quick, and I know Wayne and Elise answered some questions about the COVID testing status I was wondering about in the schools. One of my questions was, unfortunately, they're all stinking COVID and communication, but my first question was if, I know we've talked a little bit about, Elise, you mentioned going to, that Ann, Fritag had gotten some KN95s for the folks that have, or for the students, I should say, that have tested positive in order to come back to school under the, those specific CDC guidelines. I was just wondering, along those lines, has the school board, I'm sorry, I missed last month's meeting, but have you guys talked about, and maybe Elise, you can answer to this too, but kind of moving away from the cloth masks altogether in school, since we know now that those are, you know, 50% at best effective, and just wondering about like minimum, like three ply surgical masks, is that something that the school board can look into providing for students going forward or anytime soon?
I think Elise is not on now, she's gotten off, but yeah, that would be a question for like Wayne or Andy Oreo. We haven't talked about it, because I think in our last meeting, they weren't at that guideline yet. I think it might have came about since then, so.
We do supply students with disposable surgical masks that are three and four ply.
Okay, but are there still, I guess my question is just policy wise, moving forward, like not, you know, just going away from cloth, since we know that's not as effective with Omicron?
Not at this time, but it's something we could possibly discuss for next month's meeting.
I didn't know if I was the only one that had asked. I know, I know that's pretty new. It's what, a week or two? Maybe that that's been really discussed more. Yeah, that was just kind of a question, wondering if we could.
Look into that. Yeah, I think that would be, like Ann said, that the committee that, you know, this COVID response kind of committee that, that the nurses and Ann and Wayne, and I think the principals are on it, you know, could definitely be a topic.
Great, thank you. Another one was, I only have 10. I'm just got nine left. I'm just kidding. Just kidding. One was, I appreciate the updates to parents and guardians that we're getting by email about, you know, one of our, I should say, your child being exposed in the school, but I'm wondering if there's any way, and I know it's a pretty much a mass email form letter type thing. Is there any way for parents of multiple kids in schools, because thankfully, my girls are in high school, and they, they kind of know, you know, which one has been pulled from what class and that kind of thing, but if it's, you know, elementary school, and I've got two or three kids in elementary, how do I know which student was exposed? And I know we have to respect confidentiality and such, but is there a way to be slightly more specific when sending out those notifications?
No, there is not.
All right. But you understand my frustration, because I get an email, and I go, which, which kid? So there's no real way of knowing, you know, which, which of my students was exposed specifically that day.
Ann? So you're saying, no, there isn't, it just, okay.
No, I mean, we can't, if we can't, there's no, we cannot do that. I'm sorry. I mean, if you have any questions, you can call the school nurse, and she would be able to specify what student is concerned with.
They can? I thought they couldn't say that.
But they can.
They can tell me.
One of your children was exposed.
Okay, so they can specify which child, obviously, okay. All right, because they might be getting sponsored by those calls too, but, okay. And then my last question was more specific to updating parents and guardians of policy changes and updates, which I know you guys do, you know, when you meet monthly. Speaking specifically, in this case, to a recent policy update regarding disciplinary actions due to non-compliance, I'll say, with correct mask wearing. I'm just wondering if that's, can you not? I'm just wondering if there's a way besides, you know, kind of getting a phone call, or if a child hasn't been compliant or reportedly not compliant, or, you know, I know the kids are getting, hearing announcements in schools and things like that, and I understand, maybe some of these things are posted on the school district website, but I'm just wondering if there's a way to, you know, how we have kind of like the masks emails, are the emails saying that your student has been exposed? Can, or the text messages saying that there's a bust down or something? Is there a way to, that's a bad example. But is there a way to say, you know, kind of letting parents know in a different way that a pretty significant policy change like that is in place? Like, could that be a mass email as well, and not just something we're relying on? The kids learn about at school, but we know nothing else about it as parents?
But we haven't changed, I mean, we haven't changed a policy. Our policy was you wear masks, you wear them correctly. So if that's now being enforced better, and if that's what you're talking about, but otherwise, I don't I don't think the board has changed any policy like that.
Okay.
Maybe I'm misunderstanding.
Oh, no, I think, I think you did clarify that, because it is more about the disciplinary process.
Yeah, that should have been happening all along. So if it's happening now and it wasn't happening, that's wonderful.
As it should be.
That is what I have heard, that it's happening now more than it used to be happening. So that's great.
Yeah, absolutely. But if there's something like that, like if something has changed, or maybe it's now just being enforced, I guess, in this case. Is that something that, yeah, something that could be, you know, one of the mass email type of things, and not just, you know, you can find this on the website type of thing, because not everybody is doing that, not, not, and not saying that you guys should put every single policy out there, but just something that's kind of more pertinent to, I'll say, trends in disciplinaring and disciplining.
Yeah, I mean, we can have the principals talk about that, maybe at the A-Team meeting or something, but I think if it's the fact that things weren't being enforced, that should have been being enforced, and now they're being enforced, I don't know if that's really anything you know, that we should do a mass email about. So, I don't know. But, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah. Oh, you're fading away.
Oh, sorry. I was just saying, I can't get too specific myself either, so that's
Yeah.
helping my case. Um, I guess, one other thing I did want to ask along those four lines is, I know usually we get the student handbook in the, in the packets with, you know, the registration forms in the fall, and I don't remember getting one this year. Is there a way to?
It's online, Karen. We no longer print them. They're online, and that, that's in the letter that you received with your packet.
I just filled out a bunch of forms. Cute, it's all, okay, all right. So why was that? Is that more of a effective measure? I don't know.
Cost effective, and with, with COVID, it, it, it was, we didn't have the time to really sit down and do that. Number two is, to be honest with you, most parents don't even read it, and it was a waste. So they want to, and it was a, it cost about $3,500 a year to print that. It's now online. And this is the second year we've done it.
I wondered that, because mine are old. So I'm actually looking things up in there, and it's not even, not even up to date. So, all right, I'm old school, sometimes having it in my hands is is better for me. But, all right, that's it. That's all four of my questions, I guess. But thank you, guys, very much. I do appreciate all that you guys do.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you. And thank you, it wasn't nine questions. I'm joking with you. You know, I'm joking. Thank you very much.
I do. Thank you.
No, I'm all set. Thank you very much.
Jim, you had said you had something as a citizen, I think?
Yeah, so just in relation to HEF and the Education Foundation. So in addition to completing my term on the school board, I'm going to be stepping away from HEF too at the end of the projects for the year, which is the golf tournament fundraiser and the tile, the tile project for the elementary school. So once those are done, I'll be stepping away. Ann was elected chairperson, and over the next few months, I'll mentor her into how the structure of the meetings and everything, how I, how I handle that. So, congrats to Ann on being elected chairperson. And the other thing we thought was that, what we think we really need is some sort of formal agreement with the district where we, as an organization, can retain access to the SAU building. Maybe they use the copiers once in a while. I mean, it benefits the district. So we thought maybe we could meet with somebody from the administration, look at Wayne. Maybe sometime over the next couple of months to see what we can do in order to create that formal agreement. We need to have access to the SAU building whenever there's a meeting. With Ann retiring at the end of the year, we're kind of losing that easy connection. So we kind of see it as something, it's sort of like a PTA type thing, where they have access to the elementary school. You know, as HEF would like to have access to the SAU building in order to keep that continuity going. Again, I think would help the district if we could have that. So we'll work on trying to come up with some sort of formal agreement. And then we'd like to meet maybe with Wayne or, you know, whoever you else.
So I would recommend Jody and I meet and help put together an MOU that we would vote on prior to the end of the year, so there'd be something in place. Jody would be the memory of the SAU part of this group.
So we'll get a, we'll get to, we'll put something together on that, and I'd send that along to you guys.
Thank you.
And that's pretty much it. All the tile program, if anybody wants to buy a tile, you can do it on our website. So, that's it.
Great, thank you, Jim. Congratulations, Ann, on being elected chair. And Jim, thank you for your service to HAF, and I, I mean, I speak for myself, but as someone who's been on HAF the whole time, that it, I will, and I said this to you earlier, and you did not agree with me, but I want to say it in public, in publicly, publicly, that I, I HAF would not have been anywhere near as successful as it has been without your leadership, Jim. Thank you so much for everything.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, I think there's a clap thing here. Hold on one second.
Oh, yeah, let's see.
Yes, clap.
It kind of looks like jazz hands.
Jazz hands for Jim.
For Jim, yeah. Thank you.
How do I undo it?
You did. Now it's up there again.
It'll take a minute.
Okay, all right, okay. So there's no more comments. Just need a motion to go into non-public.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call again, yes?
Yes.
Aye.
Yes, yep.
Great. So we just need, actually, the board and